I call to order this meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in special session on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas, at 11:30 a.m. Board members present, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Pale Gonzalez, and me, Casey Phelan. Board members absent is Ms. Crystal Davila and Ms. Vicky Morgan. Let the record indicate that a corps of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that the notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this morning will be given by Ms. Gonzalez and the pledges by Mr. Fernandez.
Pray. Matt, thank you so much for today, for bringing us together. Thank you for the amazing changes that you're making in our district and people that you've chosen to lead the way. I pray that you continue to guide us as we make decisions for the district and that you continue protecting everyone and our children throughout the summer and until they come back, in Jesus's name, amen.
Join me in the pledge, the America flag.
Flag of the United States of America. For the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good morning, everyone. There are no public comments, so we're going to move on to the budget workshop presented by Mr. Ben Poppy.
So, board members, as he's coming up, as you'll remember, we had brought to you a budget in the very beginning of this process, early on, of a deficit around 37 million, which we all knew was unacceptable. So, we got to work and, of course, met back in April where we shared another version of the budget that included a fiscal year change, which you approved, and that will go into effect for this next school year. So, today, we're bringing you a current budget which reflects the deficit of around 6.8 million. This includes the change in the fiscal year. It also includes 1.22 disaster pennies in response to last year's tornado, which, of course, we know would not be approved until the budget is approved. No salary increase, and then right sizing staffing ratios, which has helped us identify about 150 positions we've reduced through attrition this summer, as the federal ESAR dollars, we all know, are going away or expiring in September. We also did department budget cuts, right at 3% from the current year. And then, of course, the current budget does not show any salary increase, so we are going to discuss that today. Mr. Poppy's come up to give you some more information regarding other school districts in the area, as well as not only staff salary increases, but one-time payment increases that are an option as well, and we're prepared to answer any questions that you may have. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Poppy, but you have some handouts in front of you with the information.
Thanks, Dr. Powell. Dr. Powell, within sight, hold me for you. Talking about the budget for 2025. This is the third. If we stated the initial draft budget does reflect the budget deficit. Valerie's had an ESAR coming over. Start working with our consultant and T E A.
Significant surplus with T E A.
Yes.
And with the state.
A billion.
Just saying. And even the baby is crying about school-state funding out there. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Dr. Powell talked about, there is a packet of four pages at each. I'm going to walk you through those. So, the first page is just the budget of the 6.8 million. It's the salary increases options, as well as the one-time payment options. So, if you look on the far left, there's pennies, teacher salary. Valerie is $62,456, and that has the budget deficit. Right? If you do 2%, 1% for all other staff, it's an additional budget, and that will leave the budget deficit at 13.4 million. That would increase teacher starting pay. Another option is 2% across the board. Half, still $1,814. That would be the deficit to just the work. All staff, $1,494, and have the budget deficit of 11,000. Below that, just going from left to right, is one-time option payment. A is 500 for all teachers and two for half, and that would be a budget, but in at 10.2 million. 500 for all staff. Budget has a budget deficit of 11,000. 1,000 for all teachers and 500 for other staff would be a 6.7. Budget deficit of 13.5 million, and then the last option is 1,000 and a half, which is 11,000. Budget deficit. And we've sorted them from Valerie, and then going down. Up 20 districts on the list. Valerie in 23, 24. Lying, we are kind of in the middle. That doesn't take into account all that says raise increase from ER and raise increase from C O. Look at the 4% pay rate. We'll have another budget update for July, and then we'll receive the certified July 25th from the Harris County Appraisal District. If I can end up to any questions.
We don't have an action item on any of this today, but we did want to bring you the information, what we're hearing, what we're seeing, and then, of course, be ready for when we can bring you an action item regarding raises. We're still in the midst of hiring, of course, and so this is important for decision-making for the budget process, and so we can land on where we're going to approve our final dollar amount for the deficit as well. So, any information that you need or that you don't see here that you want in the decision-making, let us know, and we'll get that for you before we meet again, so that we can continue this process and get it to the finish line before we go official in August.
We'll continue to update.
Thank you, Ben. Any other questions?
Thanks for leading to 3%. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you. That's it. Now, we're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints and charges against a public officer or employee unless the individual who is the subject of the deliberation or hearing requests a public hearing concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071 to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorneys, due to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Acts, to seek the advice of the attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer and/or consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene as quickly as possible. I know you all want to get out of here. We're going to reconvene in open session at 12:06 p.m. I'd like the record to reflect that Ms. Morgan has joined us. First item is administrative personnel.
Yes, I move that we approve addenda pages A through H.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Morgan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm getting used to this.
Now, it's my pleasure to introduce these that have been promoted today. First, we have Larissa Rebel Cava, and she could not be here, but she's going to be named speech-language pathologist for the Special Education Department. So, make sure when you see her that you congratulate her and help her in her new position. And then we have Yasmin, okay, I'm going to try this, Zana La Badin. Is that close? Named licensed specialist in school psychology for the Special Education Department. Do you have family with you?
I have my parents.
Very good. Congratulations. And tell me how you say your name, so next time I'll get it right. Very good. Thank you.
Got it.
Now, you say it three times.
Vicky's, yeah, she's saying it next time.
Like you in your new position and look forward to seeing you around. Awesome. Next, we have Lindsay Fagan, and Lindsay has been named assistant principal at Kendrick Middle School. Lindsay, sounds like you've got a cheering section with you. Do you have family with you you'd like to introduce?
I have my husband.
Next, we have Rachel Ham, and Rachel has been named instructional specialist for Special Education Department. Rachel, it sounds like you've got a lot of work family with you. Did you bring other family members with you? Awesome. Awesome. Next, we have Isaac Rodriguez. Isaac has been named assistant principal at Fraser Elementary. Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
Yeah, I have my amazing family.
Did you not bring anyone with you? Congratulations in your new position. Laurie Scarsella. Laurie's been named instructional specialist for the Special Education Department. Laurie, are you here?
I'm with it.
Okay. Pardon? Oh, Laurie, did you bring family with you?
Yes.
Very good. Victoria Winneke, and Victoria's been named assistant principal at Palmeroy Elementary School. Congratulations. I see you have family with you. Would you like to introduce them?
Yes, I have my parents.
Awesome. Awesome. Last but not least, I think y'all could just all go. Just teasing. Christopher Rojas, I'm sorry. Did I skip something? Christopher has been named assistant principal at Pasadena Memorial High School. Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
I do.
Congratulations.
April Mayberry. And I left one out. April Mayberry. I didn't do that on purpose, sweetheart. April has been named assistant principal at South Houston High School.
You have family with you?
Yes.
Mr. President, that concludes the introductions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Congratulations to everyone. We're very happy for all the changes that are coming. At this time, if you want to sneak out, we'll give you the opportunity. Thank you so much, unless you want to stay.
Who? Oh, wow. Everybody go.
That's everybody, yeah.
I mean, they're all clearing out, it looks like.
Should we tell them we're giving away gift cards at the end?
It was a person, too.
Papers are sticking together. There we go.
Okay, I guess we'll move on with.
Troy, will you get the ASCDs back in here? Jeremy, will you come up and get your partners?
Ready? Consideration possible approval of T test teacher appraisal calendar 2024, 2025, and local procedures.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a one-year engagement letter with Whitley Penn LLP as the district's independent auditors to conduct the annual financial and compliance audit for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick.
Second.
Second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of an amendment to the Pasadena ISD Local District of Innovation Plan.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
So, board members, I brought the ASCDs back in here. As we know, they work with the campuses daily on discipline, and by no means is this going to take out the summit as an option for addressing vaping for students that do choose to bring either vapes or utilize vapes at our campuses. But it does give some flexibility, and Sandy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in how we address first-time offenders or students that are not using marijuana or other illegal substances in those vapes. The law was written in this last legislative session that it left no flexibility for our ASCDs or campus administrators to make placements other than the summit each time, first offense or fifth offense. It didn't matter. And so, as you may imagine, our seats were filling up with students who may have never seen the office before, but were being placed immediately into the summit because of this decision, poor decision, we agree, but decision that was being made. So, this is just giving some flexibility. It doesn't mean it'll be utilized. Question was asked, ASCDs, about whether we've seen a decrease in vapes. What I can tell you is vaping is a problem. We're not going to deny that. It is a national epidemic. It's a local epidemic. It's one that we have conversations about all the time. I'm going to let one of them take the lead and just talk about some of the things we've done about parent education, about we piloted a vape detector. Do y'all just kind of want to talk about some of the vaping initiatives, Vape Week, and some of the things we've done? They're kind of, they were put on the spot because they didn't know this was coming, but it's an important topic, and we have conversations about vaping all the time.
Yes, we're going to attack this one. This is across the state.
You want to go to the mic? Sorry, we record this.
We're also, we also are taking the proactive approach.
And based on that, I guess you would say qualitative data, they said there was some reduction in what they saw, you know, because we were, we were seeing bathrooms being impacted, like usage of bathrooms and fear of going into bathrooms because there might be kids in there with vapes and what that meant, maybe they would be blamed or perhaps drawn into that. And so, we had discussions about whether that was getting worse or better during the school year. So, it's going to be a continual need for us to continue to address it. We're not asking you to change the rules to make it easier for kids or less punitive. We just want to have good judgment and options as administrators and as the adults that are responsible for disciplining kids, so we can work with parents like we do on every discipline case, whether it's a weapon, whether it's fighting, whether it's drugs, whatever. We don't want the legislators to tie our hands and say it's a one-case, size-fits-all kind of deal. That's all we're asking.
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Well, just like anything, cigarettes, alcohol, there's an age limit, so they're restricted. And if, I know, at least in the city, that if they're violating, we have code enforcement, we have our officers that go out and do things. I did read something recently where, I don't know if it's the state or it's on the national level, they're going after the companies that are making the flavors for the vapes so addictive for the nicotine and the drugs and the flavors. They're going after them to lower that. So, law enforcement is working towards an answer as well.
And they can buy things at the Dollar Tree. We had a person come in and train our administrators, and we were shocked that they can buy it at the gas stations and the Dollar Tree. The liquids and the items that go inside these vapes, there's so many easy ways they can come to get these materials, and so cheap, and they can be of any age to get these items. Including online.
But when they bring it into the schools, it's, it's legal. There's, no?
No. Tobacco product, no.
Well, no, they're under 18.
Yes.
I think that Pale had a question.
Quickly, do you foresee that changes will need to be made to the student code of conduct based on this?
Darla is saying yes. So, once, if this is approved, then she would bring that code of conduct, and that would be reflected in there.
Okay. Are the schools, are the school administrators, are they prepared to handle the vaping cases? Because obviously, there needs to be education, both student and I would think parent involved in this. So, if they are kept on campus, are they going to be?
So, I think, you know, we have a high school principal sitting right over there, but I think the conversations they've been part of, and they wanted this change, so they asked for this change. So, they would agree that there's going to be those cases where kids are repeated offender or bringing those illegal substances, they're still going to be at the summit, and there's going to be that flexibility to use that again, that good judgment, and when those cases need to be kept on campus, whether it's ISC, whether it's, of course, parent education, suspension, detention, you name it. And again, I think we're going to give a severe consequences regardless, but working with the parent and making sure we're trying to correct the behavior so it doesn't repeat itself.
Good. Thank you.
So, we're talking primarily nicotine?
Yes, sir.
I understand that. Okay. First offenders. When I first read this, I had a real problem with it.
It was an age-old problem. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sir, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of application for T E A low attendance waivers for campuses listed herein.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
So I think, you know, we have a high school principal sitting right over there, but I think the conversations they've been part of, and they wanted this change, so they asked for this change. So they would agree that there's gonna be those cases where kids are repeated offender or bringing those illegal substances, they're still gonna be at the summit. And there's gonna be that flexibility to use that, again, that good judgment, and when those cases need to be kept on campus, whether it's I S C, whether it's, of course, parent education, suspension, detention, you name it. And again, I think we're gonna give a severe consequences regardless, but working with the parent and making sure we're trying to correct the behavior so it doesn't repeat itself.
Good. Thank you.
So we're talking primarily nicotine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I understand that. Okay. First offenders. When I first read this, I had a real problem with it. It was an age-old problem. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sir, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of application for T E A low attendance waivers for campuses listed herein.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of material testing services agreement with Raba Kissner Inc. for the twenty-twenty-two Bond New Parks Elementary School replacement project in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-nine dollars.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're gonna adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one point zero-seven-four for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employees, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee to deliberate reassignment and duties of a public officer. We will reconvene in open session, hopefully quickly.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene in open session at twelve fifty-six P M. Purpose for the, purpose for reconvene is for the reorganization of the Board of Officers and Committees. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that you, Casey. I feel like the president for the board.
Second.
Ms. Gonzalez, second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Is there any discussion?
I would love to say thank you so much for your leadership over the past year, and we look forward to your leadership again. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other? Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion for Vice President?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Morgan for Mr. Fernandez to be our Vice President. Are there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion for Secretary?
Move that Crystal Bawa for Secretary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And last but not least, for Assistant Secretary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Morgan, that Pamela Gonzalez be our Assistant Secretary. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I cannot be more happy about this decision and the direction that the board is taking with just our organization, and we look forward to another successful year. Now, can I hear a motion on adjourning in the meeting?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. We stand adjourned at twelve fifty-eight P M. Hold on. Superintendent gets mad if I don't do this.
Thank you.
She likes noises.
I like it.